Maybe you rush in the parking lot.
John, did you want to ask some of those questions about those line items now while we're waiting for the mayor?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Marley.
He's got some line item questions.
Yeah, I just have like four or five.
Yeah.
All right, well, I guess we'll open the meeting up. So I call the meeting to order of the budget session.
Mr. Olympia, do you have any questions?
Yes, through the chair. Dr. Levine, I was reviewing the budget spreadsheets and I just had a few questions on just some of the variances. And on the green-coded spreadsheet, page number 10, line 381, I saw there was an increase of custodial. Yeah, forty-four thousand nine sixty-one. Is that?
It's probably an increase of one custodial. Might be online because of the Higgins Middle School. I'm not really sure where that is. Is that the Higgins?
There's an additional custodian because we went from two FTEs to three FTEs, so we've got an additional position added.
Okay, okay. And then, eh, line 404, there was a decrease of about, it was twenty-six thousand nine twenty-nine to special ed transportation monitors. An increase? Do we spend?
He projects every year what transportation is going to look like in special education. He may be projecting that we're going to need fewer transportation monitors next year than we needed this year. This year, we had an extraordinary number. Next year, we are aging out a number of our out-of-placement kids.
Okay.
It's going to save us actually some money.
Sure.
So with that comes fewer needs of transportation, which means fewer needs of transportation monitors. Those are, that's a living number. And as we go through the year, it's quite easy to add if we need to because it's mandated by law. So if an IEP, for example, changes and we have more kids out than we think that need transportation with monitors, we simply add them.
Okay, great, thank you. Line, let's see, line 462, attendance clerical, is that just another, we're adding, there was an increase of twenty-four thousand dollars, one ninety-four. Is that just, we're adding another position?
I'm going to, I'm going to guess that.
Half a position.
That that's a half, a half a position.
Okay, okay. And then, let's see. Then with the, I believe the Higgins, let's see, there was a line.
By the way, I think that's central office, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
With the Higgins budget, I just, something that just jumped out at me, line 196, just teaching, page nine. There was a variance of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars, you know, an increase under Higgins' general teaching supplies. I mean, is this just newer school, bigger, more supplies, is that?
Yeah, it could, it could be a variety of things. The principal's here, he may be able to speak to that better than I. I don't really get into discussions about supplies. I leave that to the principals. Todd?
I have to see the number in.
Yeah, it was twenty-eight.
No, I can see the lines.
Okay.
Get Todd, you want this one?
Yeah, you know, basically in the middle of the.
Oh, yeah, I, no, sorry. We took a lot of money, or I moved some money from the Higgins equipment line to the general teaching supplies line because going into a new building, we will not need to make the equipment purchases that we normally make
Right.
in any other year. So I moved that into supplies, knowing that moving into a new building, we will need to make supply purchases that we don't normally make in a regular year. So that would be.
Great, thank you. And then, under line 243, page 10, and it's under the high school. Two, 243?
That's on the bottom.
Let me, just textbooks, it's a decrease of eighty-six thousand eight hundred and forty. That's just because the previous year, we must have purchased a bunch of new textbooks.
Correct. And we're probably going to be down over the last couple of years, almost 300 students at the high school. I was looking at the numbers today. When we opened in September, between the last time I looked at it a few years ago and now, it's going to be about a 300-student decrease.
Okay. And, let's see, just under the utilities, under line 423, telephone utilities, a decrease of fifty thousand five seventy-five.
Actually.
Chris, do you know anything about that?
All I know about that line, that's one of the inherited with the phone system, and we just really got familiar with it this year at a budget time. There was, I believe, a two-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar line.
Yes.
And I think what's coming out of there is probably the equipment that we won't be covering for the Higgins next year. They're purchasing the copiers as part of the project.
For the project.
So the money that's coming out of there, I'm assuming, is money that was put towards copiers at the, at the existing Higgins.
Okay.
It's five weeks' copiers that are not going to be accounted for.
All right, great, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Okay, John. With that, through the chair. I made some tweaks based upon your discussion. Oh, yes.
I just have one follow-up to Mr. Olympia's question regarding the custodian. Custodians basically go by square footage, correct?
Yeah.
How many custodians by square footage of a building?
Yeah, you could, that's one way to do it, yeah.
At least that's like, in the past, I know that's what Mr. Kinnison always said.
Typically.
Square footage of the building times usage, kind of ends up with a math formula to custodian. So with that said, you're looking at adding a custodian at the Higgins.
I'm not sure it's at the Higgins, I'll have to check that.
Okay.
That's a question that I don't have the answer to.
So if you could just get back to me on where that is?
Yeah.
Because my question would be, you're actually decreasing the square footage at the Higgins. So I was questioning the need of a new custodial position at the Higgins.
I actually don't think it's at the Higgins. I think the Higgins is staying stable because not only, not only is the square footage decreased somewhat, but the newness of the building puts fewer demands on, however.
That was going to be my second question.
However, there are some other demands that some of our people will be doing down there with the technical aspect of things that they haven't been dealing with before. And they'll be doing a lot of professional development regarding those, regarding technology and the machinery that they'll be using. I don't know where that custodian's going, but I'll find out.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay. So, based upon your discussions at the first budget meeting, I did make some tweaks to this budget, which I did send you last week. I just want to go through it quickly and then open it up to you folks. If you would. This basically remains the same with one exception. I, you can see that I ignored the mayor's 1.75 million and went to 1.825, asking for another seventy-five thousand dollars, which is peanuts in a seventy-million-dollar budget. In all seriousness, that seventy-five thousand dollars, if the mayor could see his way through to give us that money, would pay for one of the proposed increases, as we get to it in the next few pages. And that was, that proposed increase is really based upon your discussion at the table from the last time we talked. Okay. This pretty much remains the same. Next. What I did here was I added, based upon your discussion, another substance abuse counselor, which means that we would be adding two full-time substance abuse counselors instead of one. I'm sorry, not substance abuse counselors, I'm sorry, school adjustment counselors. I'm sorry, school adjustment counselors. We would be adding two school adjustment counselors instead of one. One would be paid for by, again, the restructuring of the Eagles program. The other would be paid for by regular budget. That is the extra money that I'm asking for, really, from the mayor. I also added a social worker at the Welch. This came from the B-list. I think it's an important position. Of course, the school committee could direct me to turn that social worker into another school adjustment counselor because you did want to fund as many school adjustment counselors as possible. I do think, though, that there is great evidence that a full-time social worker at the Welch is going to be well-placed if you decide to fund that. We just have families that need an awful lot of help and they do come and they ask for it at the Welch. It's one of the schools that families reach out to the school for family-type help and we don't have enough counseling help to service all of the people that we need to service there. So I am recommending that we do one-on-one. If you direct me, we will replace the social worker with another school adjustment counselor, but I believe that that's a good list now, based upon your discussion. Again, the substance abuse counselor will be paid for by the clinic and the reimbursements. We've had some very productive discussions with everybody involved. We have signed off on a letter to the DA. The DA has confirmed the funding to redo that room. We're well on our way to having a substance abuse counselor there next year in an appropriate place that will really help service our kids next year in this area. And I think this is a great addition and it's really no cost to the school district because this will be paid for by two extraneous financial contributions and we're very, very thankful of that. Okay. None of the rest of the B-list has been moved. However, I will tell you that I did go through all of the class sizes today in all of the schools, all of the open enrollments and all of the school choices. I believe that there are at least two and maybe three teachers internally that would be able to be moved out of their present positions at the elementary schools and into positions that we will need, that might explode population-wise at different schools. We may not need, in other words, to add teachers with new money. I do, however, suggest strongly that you allow me what you will see as a two-hundred-and-s somewhat-thousand-dollar buffer as we go into the summer for teachers and paraprofessionals. The need always arises in the summer somewhere. I do think that we have some good news that I saw through the class-size numbers, but that can change pretty rapidly in this city. So I would ask you to maintain that buffer that I've built in, okay? The C-list remains the same. I have added, the offsets basically remains the same except I have put in the 1.825 request to the mayor for his number instead of the 1.75, okay? The capital improvement remains the same. And I put this in as a new sheet, it's basically a summary sheet. So the new proposed budget with the 1.825 would be seventy million two hundred and eighty-six thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. The incurred debt and additions would now be 3.28 million dollars minus the offsets that I built into the budget of 3.49 million dollars would leave a total expenditure against the new proposed budget of seventy million seventy-six, is that seventy-six thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars, or a two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar surplus to meet the needs of the school system over the summer. And I will remind you that that two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar surplus assumes that everything good happens next year to our benefit. Any battles, we will be in negative territory very quickly. But at least there's something so that the first time that we need an additional teacher or paraprofessional, we don't have to dig into negative territory. We have at least some buffer there. That's it, kids.
Well, thank you, Dr. Levine, and I just have a few words before we open up to counselor, to remember questions. First, I wanted to apologize for being a few minutes late, as always. My days never go quite as planned and I apologize, I feel like I'm fifteen, ten, fifteen minutes late for everything in my life. But a couple of things I do want to mention in terms of scheduling. I had a meeting today with Tim Spanos, the city clerk, a conversation with Dave Gravel, who's the finance chair, and Mike Ingris, we're targeting the budget to be presented and received on June 9th. That means that we have to get the budget to Tim Spanos by June 3rd. June 9th will be received by the counselor marked up for hearing. The city side of the budget will be marked up for June 15th. The school side, June 22nd, and then the adoption of the budget, hopefully, on June 23rd. Just to kind of give you some of those dates. Not only is June 22nd obviously very important, that's when the school budget would be presented, but June 23rd is as important as well because the final budget will be adopted. But also, we are trying to put forward and targeting the capital request date as well. And as I discussed at the last meeting, I won't go into all the different items that I'm putting forward, but there's a significant amount of capital that's coming from the school side. Technology, the science curriculum, also some work to the high school. That is all included in that and I'd love to have the support from all of you there as well when I present to the council that evening. So that's kind of where we stand in terms of timing. I know we have to meet some certain dates on our end, but that's kind of the schedule that I'd like to set for us to try to get this final budget to the city clerk by June 3rd, to meet those timelines.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Just before you start discussing, I did ask Todd to be here so that he could further explain if there were still questions regarding the culinary teacher and the bat. I forget what that stands for all the time, but we'll just call it a bat. And I did ask the techie boys to be here to explain any technology issues that did come up the last time that I wasn't totally clear on. They will be able to answer those questions as well.
Great, Mrs. Carpenter, I'll turn it over to you.
On scheduling.
Yes.
I was writing down the dates as you went through them. So I know we have to post and have our public hearing and I believe we need 10 days. Is it 10 days? We have to have our public hearing, so did you?
I wasn't sure.
Yeah. What did you say, for June 3rd?
To be on the agenda for June 9th, we need to get it to Tim Spanos on the Friday before the meeting. So that would be Friday, June 3rd, to get it to Tim so they can be put in the packet to be received by the council on June 9th.
So if that's the case, and we have to, we have to have our public hearing, if it's 10 days, we need to finish in the next two days.
If we need, so we need 10 days in between?
I can't remember if it's 10 or not.
I'm looking it up.
Are you looking it up?
Yeah.
While she's looking through on the.
Yeah, on the same topic. Do we have to have, when do the city councilors get our budget? Do they get, do they get sent out that Friday before?
They get sent out that Friday.
Okay.
So they would receive it on the 3rd, the hearing or the council meeting would be the 9th. All they do at that time is receive it and mark it up for finance committee of the whole. That's what was being proposed by Council Gravel, President McGinn, was to have city side on Wednesday the 15th, school side Wednesday the 22nd, with final adoption Thursday the 23rd.
Do you remember, Karen?
I think it is 10 days.
It is, sorry.
We have, we have to post it and then publish, not, I'm sorry. We have the seven-day publication done.
Seven.
So.
All right, so.
We should check on that 10 days to see if it's in the chart.
Business days, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so. Nine, you gotta skip the 3rd, yeah? That gives us 11 days. Yeah, we skipped Memorial.
So we resolve the budget tonight and then what?
Well, we might be able to.
Well, then we can set up a public hearing.
And then post for the public hearing and then we can go.
Yeah, because we can post a public hearing and we can, we can still work on it.
We can still work on it.
We can still work on it because you only have to provide a copy of the budget for, within 48 hours of the public hearing for people to review it, for members of the public to review it. So you can, you can pick a day and that's, you know, that's your drop-dead date and keep working on it if needed.
Okay, so, yeah, I figure we'd have to work backwards and figure out our dates on the school committee yet, but I just wanted to kind of give you the timeline that the council and Tim Spanos would like to see us adopt. So then we would ask Marge to post the public hearing on our end for.
Would that be June 1st? Did you say 48 hours?
Yeah, June, yeah, June 3rd's a Friday, isn't it?
June 3rd is a Wednesday, June 3rd's a Friday. So if we had our public hearing, yeah, because then that Monday is Memorial Day, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah, convocation is Thursday the 2nd, so I think Wednesday.
The 1st is the only day, yeah.
June 1st, Wednesday, June 1st, have a public hearing.
That's it now. I have a union meeting, we can, we'll work on that after some time.
Science fair is that even at the high school.
Oh.
That's usually a quick event, the science at 7:00. We wanted to have it maybe, actually, I would recommend, sorry, through the chair, that we have public hearing at 6:00 because it usually takes. At the high school at 6:00? Either at the high school or here or wherever.
Well.
But, yeah. I mean, the high school's fine.
Yeah, if we did the public hearing at the high school and the library, and what time is the science fair?
7:00. That works. All right, why don't we target that, the last, Marge, to send a public notice for the public hearing on the school budget for Wednesday, June 1st, at the high school library at 6 o'clock. Very good.
Got it.
Okay. Mr. Rosberg.
Through the chair, to the chair. So does that mean you're very comfortable with the 1.825? Well, we're looking to expedite this rather quickly.
Well, let's leave it at 1.75 and see how we do, yeah. But as all of you know, I always want to try to be in a position, I know, while we work together, we want to make improvements and keep making additions, so I'm very happy to put forward a number to kind of keep us moving in the right direction. We can never do everything that we want, of course, you know, some, there are some limitations certainly, but I feel like we've made good investments every year and a lot of confidence in this group. Certainly, I would have some little changes that I would make in terms of the A-list, B-list, C-list. Really only one change actually that I would make. But I think this is a, you know, a lot of outstanding work put in by our superintendent and his team, and I appreciate that. And open it up to the members for comments, questions, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Through the chair, Dr. Levine, the social, social worker at the Welch. You are correct in saying that, I know I would prefer to have a, an additional school adjustment counselor. My feeling is, we're not supplying students with what they need at this point. I do realize that, as a whole, the family needs to be taken care of as well. But we're not, we're not supplying the children's needs right now. So I would rather have another school adjustment counselor. I would suspect possibly, school adjustments counselors can refer out to families through their insurance or through any other state means to get a social worker for themselves. There's lots of avenues that they can take, I believe. But I think the school adjustment counselors would be a little bit more needed, in my opinion. And then, the, I did notice that Mr. Bucy was here and I'm just wondering, is he going to, was he here to talk about the building access attendant?
Well, that and I, through the chair, I believe that the issue of the culinary teacher came up as well at the table. Just if I may respond to Mrs. Carpenter, I believe that you're, you're correct and I think that there would be unintended positive consequences by adding the school adjustment counselors even in place of the social worker because the more school adjustment counseling help you get, you're absolutely right, the more ability there is for us to refer people to the right places for family help as well. So, you know, for me, it's not something I fall on my sword for, the difference between a social worker and another school adjustment counselor. The fact that we're talking about being able to add those positions is a terrific thing and I think it's a testament to the importance that the mayor puts on education and just being able to have enough to talk about these kinds of positions is a terrific thing.
And I do appreciate you listing it and, you know, I do recognize the need and it is something that in the past would never have been able to talk about, these type of positions. So I do appreciate it. I'm all set.
Any other comments, Mr. Rosberg?
Just on, just to follow up on Mrs. Carpenter's points. Have you talked to the principal as far as the social worker versus the school adjustment counselor at that building?
Not versus the school adjustment counselor, but she very much would like a social worker. It was one of the things that we talked about when I met with each principal individually. She was very much emphasized the need for her particular community, for the need for a social worker. Now, I don't think that she would look badly on the addition of a school adjustment counselor in place of a social worker since she would be getting a significant piece of that anyway. So I don't think that the principals would do anything but applaud the list regardless of which way it went.
And the other two school adjustment counselors that are listed on list A, they would be going where?
Well, we would shuffle the deck, you know, we would take a look then at what we had and what we needed. Almost every school then, if the social worker, if the school adjustment counselor substituted for the social worker, we would cover nearly every school full-time. We'd be pretty close.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Dyer.
Thank you, Mr. Levine. Thank you, Dr. Levine, for bringing, bringing this forward. My question about the social worker, and I think it's a, I think it's a wonderful idea. I really do think it's something that's needed at the Welch as well as other schools. Could we inquire at Salem State, at their school of social work, or at any of the local colleges with the schools of social work? Many of the students there need internships, they need, they need significant hours. I don't know what the supervisory requirements are for social work. But if we could look into that to see if students would be able to serve and work in the district to get the experience. They really need the experience and we need someone who can do social work because a social worker is going to cut through and navigate the red tape for the people who are involved with so many different agencies. That's my understanding with the social work.
It's, through the chair. It's a, I would certainly take a look at that and talk to Salem State. My guess is that they would have to work, the interns would have to work directly under a licensed social worker, which we would not have available unless there's, there's one at the high school in the clinic. And there might be one at the, so the person doesn't necessarily have to be on-site all the time, but has to be available. And we have to be very careful about interns being on their own at a school, for example, and giving advice in very sensitive areas without direct social work supervision. So I would be a little bit hesitant to do that. If we had a social worker on-site, you know, the bond door is open for interns. But I'd be just a little hesitant to do that without direct supervision because of the sensitive, sensitive nature of the information that's discussed.
Right, and I think they're bound, they have to have supervision close by. So I don't know, many of our staff have numerous certifications.
We'll take a look.
If we, if we could, it might be a step forward because there's also an initiative, I read about it today from Dr. Baker. It is in, it was in a discussion about homelessness and how they're already reducing the number of families living in motels. And one of the goals of his administration is to increase the number of social workers who are working with families to take care of all of the issues that lead to homelessness. And they're finding that many of the people who are homeless are also involved with all these other different agencies, which is, we do have people who are homeless who live in the Welch School District. They are covered at the. They are covered at the shelters that they, that they live at, and they have social workers who work with those folks. But if the initiative from the administration in Boston is to get more social workers into the field to help with a lot of the social issues that people are facing, this might be something where they may look at our school district and think that it would help if they, if they assigned a social worker. It would, it's just a shot in the dark, but...
We're blocking it too.
It, it might help, because these are the people that the state wants to help, and they could do it right at our building. So it might be, might be a possibility too.
Absolutely, I'll take a look at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Dunn.
Mr. Hartman? Thank you. To that point, great point, Mr. Hartman. Through the, just appointment information, we do have, I did have an opportunity to tour the west therapeutic program yesterday along with Will and co-chairs of the Special Education PAC. And we do have a licensed social worker there who does have interns. She has a relationship with both Salem State and Boston University, and there are interns working in the west right now. So if, if that's the case, I might lean towards a social worker where we might be able to get additional support without a cost as opposed to a school adjustment counselor. But on that point, through the chair to Mr. Jack, are we, were we talking about the school adjustment counselors? Are you using line three-three-nine and calling them guidance professional adjustment counselors?
In terms of...
Are you codify them within the budget? I don't see a line for school adjustment counselor, I see a line for professional, guidance professional adjustment counselor.
I'll have to go back and, and give you that answer, but I believe they're gonna... When we put new positions in, we've, we've identified those, they're very clear. I don't know whether the existing ones exist today. Where they're, where they're being coded, but I will have that answer.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna assume that that's the line that we're operating under. There's presently five point four FTEs in the sixteen, fifteen, sixteen budget. Whether we add two and make that six, seven point four, or three, eight point four, we're still not at one FTE per building, and I think that was Ms. Carpenter's hope, if I heard her right, at our last budget meeting. Do we have, are we gonna be able to identify what FTEs each building is gonna get firstly? And secondly, if we're, if the superintendent's asking for one FTE at the Welch, regardless of whether it's a social worker or a school adjustment counselor, is the superintendent able to commit one FTE to the Welch?
So with respect, that's operational, and that would be determined by, once you develop the budget, where the greatest needs are to fill in the holes that we presently have. That would be determined by my meetings on Monday mornings, we go over these, these issues. Will would be involved in that, Kara would be involved in that, Charlie would be involved in that, and all of the principals would be involved in that. So it's a longer discussion, and I can't answer that right now. One thing I can tell you is that we do have holes. We have, we have times during the day that schools are uncovered for school adjustment counseling. And those seem to be the times that kids have meltdowns. And we don't have people readily available to go where they need to go. One of the discussionary points that we've already had about the new school adjustment counselor at the middle school would be that that person would be a floater, so that no matter where a school may need somebody, if it's uncovered, that that person would be available to go there from their middle school assignment in the Eagles program. We, we think that will work, I've had that discussion with Will. We may not be able to do that, have to do that so much if we add two more schoo- that was based on adding one school adjustment counselor. This is now the possibility of adding three school adjustment counselors. If we don't add the social worker and we make it a school adjustment counselor, we're gonna be pretty close to full-time coverage. It's not gonna be full-time, but it's gonna be pretty close.
Thank you. Through the chair.
Yeah, by the way, I'm sorry, I, a lot of the assignment of school adjustment councils is based on individual child. You know, certain schools that we know are gonna need coverage more and longer than other schools because of the number and the nature of the individual child that, that is assigned there. And that's another thing that we take into consideration.
Sure. Through the mayor to Dr. Levine, with regard to the, a few of your A-list items. I don't have an issue with most of them, I do have a question regarding some of the numbers that you're putting in there for them. So for example, the therapeutic program executive, I guess, is what the access. He has them at ninety thousand dollars, and looking at the line for therapeutic program staff right now, and there's two FTEs at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, sixty-four thousand each. I'm just wondering what the, what's the, do you really believe that that differential is necessary?
It's, it's, yeah, it's, it's, first of all, it's a teacher, it's an, it's a paraprofessional, and it's benefits.
So it's two different positions, it's a...
Yeah, it would be a tea- right, this, if we're gonna add a program, if we're gonna add another classroom, it's gotta be fully established, and fully established means a teacher and a para. And that would, that gives us a twelve-student capacity.
But not really. I mean, I think legally, it's a twelve-student capacity, in reality, is that's not...
In reality, it's, that's why we're adding another classroom.
Right, okay, so the same thing with my, my question with the teacher for the deaf, and I actually had a chance to tour that program yesterday too, and I realized that there's a student leaving the McCarthy and going up to the Higgins, and they want to be able to have a, a teacher stay with that student to the extent that we are able to fund this position. But again, the differential between what the teachers make... So the line that I'm looking at for three forty-two, which shows one FTE for a deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher at sixty-four, four, four, seven, that's without Benny's?
That's without Benny's.
That's salary, so the seventy-five is an expectation that there'll be benefits associated with that.
Not only that, but the, we're not sure this is gonna be a full-time position yet. We're still working on that and working out whether or not we can get a, have a teacher of the deaf to service the kids that we need to service without going full-time. We may need only a point six, we may need a point eight, we're still massaging that. And we were having that conversation today as a matter of fact.
And, thank you. And if it's all right at this point, Mr. Mayor, can we ask Mr. Bucy to come forward and ask a few questions about the two A-list items that are tomorrow? Those are clearly marked for his building.
Gifts, any gifts you have would be appropriate at this point.
Hi, Mr. Bucy, welcome.
Thank you.
So the two, the two lines that are on Dr. Levine's A-list are for culinary instructor, I believe, and also for a, what he's now called a building access attendant. It's gone through a few different iterations at start title, and that's all fine. But if you don't mind talking about the culinary position first.
Sure.
If we go, if we go way back in history at the Higgins, we, we had a lot of, we call exploratories. When we first opened as a middle school, including wood shop, metal shop, we had the Voke programs, and the Voke was at the Higgins. We used to send our kids to the Voke programs as part of an exploratory rotation. We had culinary at the time, we had consumer science, and we gradually, those got whittled away every budget season, instead of taking academic teachers or foreign language, we would take away an exploratory class. And it got to the point where our exploratory classes aren't really that exploratory anymore. We still have art, music, we have a great performing arts program, but we've got, a lot of the times we've been built into exploratory, we've built in some reading classes, some math classes, some ELA classes. And we want to bring back that exploratory piece. We had the opportunity with a new building to create a culinary position, which is really more of a nutrition position now. Culinary is, is, it's a hot position in terms of where kids are going in the marketplace. It's a very popular program at PB High, and we see this as an opportunity to bring a position in that will tie into our health curriculum a little bit too with nutrition and to serve as a nice feeder to the high school and to give some career and exploratory opportunities to our kids that we need to, we need to improve a little bit in that area.
So, thank you. So you do, I don't know how you do what you do, you know, that, that building. It's an incredibly diverse population and difficult most of the time. And you do, do a really terrific job there, as does your staff. So my, my, I guess I want you to talk me into something, because I'm not necessarily opposed to adding an exploratory, and I think that there is a need for that, I, I agree with you. Why culinary, is there, is there a, is that what the students are talking about, what they want?
It is, it's, it is a, it is one of the most popular programs at, certainly elective programs, I can't speak vocationally at the high school, but it is, every single eighth grader, that's the class that they want to take at the high school. It is something that is, it's a popular alternative path for education for kids. When you look at the, the people that are out there in the culinary world that are succeeding, they didn't do well in school. And to provide that opportunity for, for kids, and to, to provide that exploratory for a middle school kid, like, this is a career, this is a place for us to go, this is an actual path that I might be able to go in. I, that is the next exploratory that I would bring on. And I've been thinking about this for seven years now, since the beginning of the, of the school project. So it is, it is something that, that I think there's a passion for.
So through the mayor, if I may, do you have an estimate as far as how many students that you'd be able to service with a, with a culinary program?
We would make it part of, well, we've been discussing exactly how, there are some parts of our exploratory program that pretty much every kid takes. We have our health engineering and design program right now, which is quarter of, two quarters of health, a quarter of technology, engineering, and a quarter of graphic design. And just about every one of our kids in the building has that, and they rotate through for a quarter for each one of those. Our plan would be to figure out a way to have culinary be similar to that or attach it to the health program and maybe move one of those art classes out. So we would probably have, I don't know what the number would be, but it would be greater than fifty percent of our kids would be taking that class.
And if I'm hearing right, there's a vocational component to this, is that...
No, but the vocational component of the high, the culinary program at the high school. We have worked with Ms. Ferry at this point to develop the curriculum and to, to develop the supply list that we would need, and she is, and as are the other culinary teachers at the high school, supporting the creation of the program. But there's no actual vocational tie-in at this point.
Okay, and if I may move on to the building access attendant. This gives me a lot of concern and, and on a lot of levels. And from what I understand, I've had fairly lengthy conversations with Dr. Levine about this, not so much for the need for building access attendant, but the support that I think somebody in this position would need. If we're, and the technology that I don't understand, and maybe the technology department can shed some light on that. From what I understand, there's gonna be some sort of machine or device in which a person who's entering the Higgins is going to produce a driver's license or an identification card or something. And that's gonna get scanned or slid through a machine, which is going to produce information that would either allow that person access or they would be denied access based upon the, the results of that. Is that, is that, is that accurate on?
Most, yeah, I would say it's mostly accurate. The system we have, it's, it's called the Raptor, as a matter of fact. And it, it does do that, it takes someone's government-issued ID, whatever it is, and it's scanned, and what it, it, all it, it ties into the sex offender registry database at this point. The rest of it would be internal for us. So we would be able to put in any custody issues or any restraining order issues or any dismissed to the grandmother on Tuesday afternoon. And when that ID is scanned, that information comes up on the screen, and that is the information that the person who is checking people in has. It doesn't, it wouldn't have something that comes up and says this person is denied. There, something may pop up on the screen that causes this person to then... The system actually allows this person, when, if this happens, it allows for a text message or an email to go to the appropriate person. So if there was someone coming in, depending on the level of the issue that there was, it might shoot a text message to the guidance counselor saying this person's here and wants to pick up Sally, but it's not Tuesday, can you come down? And the, and the guidance counselor could come down, it's built right into the system. But it would, the system itself would not deny entry to anyone. It's still a human, it's still a human system, doesn't have the technology at this point for, at the door, for the ID to say, we can't let this person in and not allow the door to be open. It's still a human piece that's, that's...
So what, what, what procedure or protocols do you have in place now? I mean, I know that the office location is gonna be different in the new building, the office is closer to the entry door. But what, what protocol do you have now for, if someone were to come in the building and want access, I guess, beyond the office, which is...
With, similar, we check the ID of the person that's coming in, but it's a paper log where we write down someone's name as they come in. And it's not, we're able to look at a name and then reference any paperwork that we might have, but it's not an automatic system that would give us the information in a database that would, would be on a screen, and it's not as, as fast as this system would be. It would, it would be working in the background while the person's signing it. Also, what it does, this system also prints out the visitor badge that has the person's picture on it. And it's a little sticker in the picture and the time, and the visitor wears that. Basically, what you're able to do is you check the ID, that the ID, the picture matches the person in front of you, and the, that picture is on the, the ID badge that the person has. So it, it, the process is similar to what we do now, but the technology allows for us to do it more quickly and more efficiently.
So just for example, if, if let's say a person entering the building had a restraining order on them and weren't permitted to be near that child now, and they walked into your building with paperwork from court where they might have just come from and have evidence that that order was vacated, your office or your staff would recognize that and, or maybe contact the school resource officer or some other support and, and then allow for whatever that person is permitted to do or not permitted to do to take place?
And that process would be the same.
You're saying that, okay.
The process would change.
So it's not simply the readout off a scan that's going to... There'll be other support and protocols in place that will allow for updates if you want, that might not be in the system?
Exactly, and the scan allow, the scan also allows us frequent visitors who would scan in and you'd have their ID, you'd have their ID scanned in. And when someone comes in and they give their ID and, and someone that's been through many times before, it's gonna be instant, instant badge access into the building. So like our PTO people and, I think, people who are in the building all the time, they wouldn't have to go through that process. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Mr. Miko?
Through the chair to Dr. Levine or to Mr. Bucy. On the, on the bat, on the building access attendant, my only concern is when that ID is swiped and that person has not gained access, do we have a plan in place in case of an escalated conflict right there and then? Because as you said, presently, they, they show an ID and you fill it out and there's a form, but with this, it, it's instantaneous, and, and that's my only concern with having someone there at the desk. You know, that person's now not able to come into the building, and I'd like to see something in place to make sure if that escalates, you know, what can we do other than hit nine-one-one, 'cause it's, you know, it's right in front of you, it's happening, and...
So through the chair, that would be a combination of things, and that's a good question, Mr. Miko. One, one would be the appropriate person, another would be the appropriate training of that person. And the third would be what I know that Mr. Bucy has already talked to me about, and that is that person getting in touch with the administrator immediately to come down and take over the situation. So it's really not gonna be the job of the person sitting at the desk to even de-escalate the situation or to continue the conversation. The job of the person at the desk will be to say, please wait, I'll get you someone who can help you. And that will hopefully end that issue, and then an administrator will be immediately available.
Yeah, if I could add to that. The system that we are getting allows us to set up it in such a way that if that did happen, there would be, the system would immediately alert. So if, let's say it's someone on the sex offender registry, it would immediately alert the administrators, the administrators in the building, it would alert Officer Calella, our school resource officer. That would have an immediately, be, probably simultaneously to it coming up on the screen for the, for the person at the desk. And that, that system, as opposed to what we have now, we'd have to call, we'd have to contact by radio, we'd have to do it in a way that is subtle enough so that not... We'd have to do it in a way that is subtle enough so that not everybody knows what's going on. This is, this is instantaneous. So that's, that's.
Thank you. One other thing, on the culinary middle school position. So through the chair to Mr. Busey. So that would be an elective position for, an elective class for students? And how many students again would, would benefit from that?
Certainly greater than half of our students. And it's not really elective in that we don't, we don't really have elective exploratories every, except for band and chorus in our technology, student technology assistance team. Most of the exploratories are scheduled into, into a kid's schedule so that they get a little, a taste of a little bit of everything. So that's the schedule that it would be part of.
Through the chair of the committee, I think it's a great investment. I think not only culinary, but eating disorders are such a major part of our social world today. And to have this in place, I think it would really benefit especially students at the middle school level. They're, they're in need of it and I fully support it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lippiya?
Through the chair, Mr. Busey. Would you, the business access attending, would they be available after school hours? What's the timeframe? And if not, what's the protocol for when school ends?
We have it designed primarily as a school day position. We have, we have the ability in the, once the school day is over, we have the ability in the office to do the same thing just from the office. And when there are not as many people in the building and it's just staff and me, then I can do that same job as they come into the building. But I think we're looking at it primarily as a, as a school day. There may be events that are going on after the school day that we may want to either adjust the schedule of that person or do something with flexibility so that we can have that, that person there, depending on what's going on. But for the most time, I think, most part, I think we're looking at this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Busey, did you say it was called a Raptor system?
The Raptor, yes.
The Raptor? So my question was, you said it will alert the proper person. What, how does that alert get to, say, you? Through what means?
It's either a text message or an email, however we have it set up.
Okay. Do you know how much that system costs?
I do not. It's part of the building project, so I'm not sure.
It, it sounds wonderful. I'm just curious how much it costs if we... Because we're doing the same thing at the high school. You check in, it's off, you think they're...
I think it's not as, it's not as expensive as I would have thought it was. It's, I have the information back at school.
So initially, somebody would have to data entry, all of that type of information. But the only thing that automatically comes up without us entering any information is the SORI, the sex offender. No queries, no police records, no driving type of things. It's just SORI.
It's just SORI. And that's the, it's the only national database I think that's available. And then the, the rest of it would be what we locally input into the system. And that could be any, any kind of information that we want to have there. And I think instead of having to rifle through to find an emergency form to see who's on it, it would be, it would be right there.
What a great resource.
Yeah, it really, really.
Yeah, that really is good. Through the chair, Mrs. Dunn, do you have any idea how much it costs being on the building committee?
No, I, I actually do not know what that, that system goes for.
Just in the future, Dr. Levine, if we could look into, see how much it costs?
Through the chair, techie boys?
We, we actually just very recently learned about the Raptor system in a meeting we had about a week ago. So that, that's entirely new to us. But I mean, if we can assist with...
We'll find that out. I can find that out by phone call tomorrow.
Yes, we're essentially doing the same thing at the high school.
Yeah, I have the, I just...
Okay. We'll, we'll get it to you tomorrow. I'll get it out to you tomorrow. And through the chair, if I could, you referred to the technology department by its old name. It is now known as the techie boy department. This, this, by the way, is, is done in many high schools now. This system, Tanvus High School has the system in place. And almost every new high school that's been built in the last 10 years has a system similar to this.
Just, what do we do if they don't have a license or an ID? We're just going back to the regular old-fashioned way? Is that person still going to have access? The building access attendant, they'll still be able to process?
With a picture ID, without a picture ID now, we, we are not allowing anybody to either take anyone or commit to the building. You need a government-issued picture ID to do that.
That's pretty consistent with private buildings now also.
I would know. I always have my picture ID, so I don't know, I don't know what they do.
However, that's where the, the frequent visitors come in, because you'll have their picture on the screen and you'll have the person standing in front of you.
So you're all set, so it's just a...
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mrs. Dunn, then, Mr. Rosigal?
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Mr. Busey, thank you very much for the explanations. I was trying to explain the culinary program in light of home act. So you did it, you did it proud. You really explained it very well. And I'm very glad that Higgins is going to have the culinary classroom. One of the things that we noticed in a lot of the new buildings that are going up for middle schools, they are including culinary classrooms in those buildings. And it's really something that's, it, it's tied in with nutrition and health and science. It can be used in so many different ways. It is an important class for students at that age. So I'm very glad that you're, you know, that you're doing that and making sure that the students do get that exposure to being able... It's a life skill, learning how to, to cook and how to nutritionally and how to be safe in the kitchen. There are so many lessons that they will be able to provide to the students that it really is, it's going to be a great program, but it's a great idea to bring it back. So, thank you. And with the building access attendant, I will just say I am very much in support of that. I think it's, it's a very good feature of the security of the building. In this day and age, everyone is worried about security. And this is an attempt to make sure that that building is able to run smoothly presently. You have office staff doing a lot of different things at once. This person is going to be dedicated to screening the people who come in the building and being able to contact the appropriate people so that someone comes down and can escort that person to wherever they're supposed to be in the building. So I think it's a very important piece of, of the new Higgins. And it's going to help greatly with many different issues that we, we face every day from the building sound.
Thank you. Mr. Rosigal?
Thanks. I'll be brief. I'm absolutely in support of the culinary teacher. I think that you hit the nail on the head as far as it being a feeder system for the high school. That's, I think, what we're really trying to institute at the Higgins, is more feeder programs into our already established high school programs. So any more that we could add, photography, visual arts, anything else that we can kind of continue on that path, that'd be all in Bay Road. Because when you get to high school, you're sometimes limited. But if you already have a taste of it at the middle school level, it's just something that you can grow a passion for. So that one, I'm absolutely 100% on board with. The building access or bat or attendant or whatever we're calling it right this second, it's only $20,000, so I'm not going to believe your point drastically. But you said they're already doing it now. And this system will actually make it easier. So why do we need a new position for something that's already being done and handled in an archaic manner compared to what it's going to be handled next year? I don't see the benefit. But I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Rosigal. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Hockman?
One of the students here, boy, they're representative. Are you anticipating that the building access attendant would be a member of unit C? And will it develop some sort of...
No. Oh, no, no, no. Actually, not a member of any unit.
Oh.
It's like security.
Be similar to the security at the high school.
Okay. And since, after that, to the mayor. Since I'm not hearing much by way of my colleagues in terms of objections to Dr. Levine's A-list. And we're $75,000 apart between what he's projecting and what you are offering. We may be able to get through something fairly quickly, it sounds like, if you're able to bridge that shortfall.
No, I, I, my thoughts, and you guys have all articulated them very well. I, I wasn't sure about the social worker. I didn't know if a school adjustment counselor would be better there. The only other one that I, I did like to was the K-212 director, director of curriculum and instruction. I thought with the science, new science curriculum being rolled out this year and then we're looking at maybe the social studies the following year. You know, I thought that might be a worthy investment as well. But I certainly would defer to the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and all of you as to what's the, the item. But certainly, if, if we're narrowing it down and maybe looking at the school adjustment council instead of a social worker, I'd be ready to meet, to meet that number, the 1.2825. So, there we go. There we have it.
That sounds good. Let's do it.
Okay.
Want to make a motion?
Just, may I ask, before you make a motion?
Quick, before you change his mind.
I want the other eight. Can we get the other eight?
Would you finalize the A-list for me, please? And just make a, a motion since I've, I've given you the social work. Would somebody move to switch that out for another school adjustment counselor so that I have that directive?
Again, on that point?
Yeah. Can you, I mean, the only, if I may, I haven't been directed by.
Nobody does.
Don't let anybody talk. Let's just move.
I'll go to Mr. Hockman and Mr. Rosigal.
Yeah, no.
I think I understand.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, the only, I, I hear you a lot in there, Ms. Carpenter, there in terms of the school adjustment counselor. And I agree that we, we need as many as we can get. The only added benefit that I see with, with a social worker is being able to get some interns and some additional people in the building who would be able to help. And I think that Dr. Levine and Mr. Rubitzel, after consultation, will commit a one FTE to the Welch because there's a, there's a need for someone there full-time. But I think that with a licensed social worker being able to have two or three interns to assist in that population may just benefit us. And maybe if we could look at that for a year and if that doesn't work, move to a school, a school adjustment counselor. I see, I had direct conversations on this various subject yesterday with the therapeutic program at the West. And she would just, you know, was talking about how it enabled her to do other things while in the building and interns were present. And, you know, she had direct supervision of them, not, you know, full contact with them, but supervision of them. I just kind of see that there's an added benefit in maybe reaching more kids with a, with a social worker.
Mr. Rosigal? I said you would be next.
I'm, I'm kind of along the same lines of thinking as Mr. Hockman. I just want to make sure we maximize our bank for our buck. If that means getting students from San Jose State in conjunction with a social worker so we're getting more bodies for the same price tag, I'd be all for that. If that's not the situation, then I just want to make sure that kids are getting serviced. And I just want to make sure we maximize services that they're getting, whether it's through the school adjustment counselor or through a social worker.
Mrs. Dunn, then, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you, Ms. May. The expansion of the therapeutic program, we know that we need to do that. Also, if I'm, if I'm not correct, please correct me, but there are many students from the Welch in the therapeutic program. Is, is that still the case? It was when it first opened?
I wouldn't say many. No, I wouldn't say many.
Okay, then, then I'm sorry. Danny answered my question.
That service is a different population than what a social worker might service. For example, or even a school adjustment counselor. They're, they're at a different level.
Okay. When it first opened, it was a little bit different.
Yeah, it's, it's a different level.
Okay.
Mrs. Carpenter?
To the point about the, the social worker, my thought on that is if we switch that out for a school adjustment counselor, because all of our schools need more school adjustment counselors, we'll be able to service more of them because what we're doing is we're spreading them around on an as-needed basis. In my opinion, the school adjustment counselor, by having more of them, will be able to identify more children who will need a social worker. And I think that the families are able to still get that social worker on their own by being referred. But they're not able to get the school adjustment counselor until we fully staff all of the schools with them. So my thought is, they can get that social worker. They can't get the school adjustment counselor. And, and that's where I'm asking for it to be switched.
Thank you, Mr. Miko.
Through the chair of the committee, I'm actually torn on that. Hearing Mr. Hockman speak, at one point, I said, oh, I'm thinking, yes, a social worker. And now with Mrs. Carpenter speaking, I'm thinking maybe the school adjustment counselor. I guess what I'm trying to say here is that I think we need both. And if we do have a buffer, maybe in the summer, a cushion, maybe we can, or if the mayor was like, I mean, he gave him pretty easily there after $8,000 for, I'd love to do it right now. But I, I'm just saying, hopefully, whichever way we decide, that if there is a buffer in the summer, we definitely need either another school adjustment counselor or another social worker. And in addition to maybe one or two teachers that you had alluded to. But that's how I feel on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
One of the things that a social worker does is they, they find appropriate resources for a person, correct? Perhaps there is a way that we would be able to help the elementary school guidance counselors to have a resource bank where they are better able to access those services that a social worker would, would be steering them to. The school adjustment councils, by understanding, they help, they help the students who are not on an IEP because they have not been diagnosed, but they still need services. I mean, it's a very simple way to explain it, but...
Well, school, through the chair, school adjustment councils actually help both, but they do help special ed students. It's a special ed position, actually.
Oh, okay.
So they're servicing that, right?
Right, but they are able to help. They are able to help others.
Well, yeah, they, they are, but they're, they're not locked into just special ed. But, but their primary role, I mean, it's hard to deny a kid who need, might need their services just because they're not on special ed, because they might eventually be on. But for the most part, their role is to service the special ed population. The guidance counselor, on the other hand, services the gen ed population.
Right. And a social worker would...
But may not have, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, to finish the thought, the, the guidance counselor may not have the depth of skill to help the student the way a SAC might have.
Right. They, they have different roles.
They have different roles.
But a guidance counselor could be able, could be able to help in many of the ways that a social worker could.
And, and does.
And, and does, right, because, I mean, I'm, I'm going back to a time where we had a half-time guidance counselor. And then we got a full-time guidance counselor at the elementary level, in one school. And then we eventually ended up being one of the only school districts in, in anywhere in the state at the time to have a full-time guidance counselor in every elementary school. It has helped greatly. And if we can give them some more tools, help them to be able to advocate for the students of the building a little bit more, a social worker would definitely be doing that exclusively. But our guidance department, not to put more on the guidance department because they, they have a lot on their plate as it is. And that's something I'd like to bring up later on, not for this budget. But I can envision someday where we have an office of testing. And the job of those people would be to administer all the tests that go on in the system because right now, that's what the guidance counselors are doing. And it's, it's abuse of their talents, serious. If we can lessen the testing that they deal with, they would be able to do a lot of the things the social worker would do.
If, if this would help, at this point in the discussion, I think I would favor a school adjustment counselor at this point. And the reason for this is, I think that hearing your discussions and knowing where we're going regarding school adjustment counseling, this would almost lock up our need for school adjustment counselors and would provide some of the services that a social worker might provide anyway. Because it will provide more onsite help for kids directly. And I think Mrs. Dunn makes a good point, that we do have guidance counselors who provide a tremendous service for our kids and families now at each school that would work hand in hand with the school adjustment counselor. We can work on social work. You'll see this in the next budget. But I think at this point, for those of you who are on the fence and, listen, it's, it's a, it's a no-lose situation as far as I'm concerned. I would think that maybe, maybe go with the school adjustment counselor this year in place of the social worker and we'll address the need for social work next year. That's just my recommendation.
Mr. Rosigal, then, Mr. Lippiya?
I'll be brief. I just want to commend this board. I just want to commend this board. When I first got on, one of the first things I think we did was to cut SACs.
Yeah.
So, and part of that was the timing and budget and money, and it's amazing how six, seven years later, we are realizing the error of our ways and we're kind of correcting a situation that we, believe it or not, put ourselves in.
With the assistance of Mrs. Trumples.
Yeah, yeah.
She was a big advocate of that.
Absolutely. So I just want to applaud this board, your leadership, Mr. Mayor, you giving us the funding, obviously, just to do the right thing. So that was just my two cents.
Thank you. Mr. Lepio?
Through the chair, I agree with Ms. Carpenter, she put it well, and I would agree with the recommendation from the superintendent.
Mrs. Carpenter?
With all of that being said, I just want to add, I firmly believe by adding the SAC, we're going to be able to service more students, we can spread them around more. But I would like to make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommended budget proposal, including the A-list and swapping out item 10, social worker for a school adjustment counselor. Senator.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Any further comments? Hearing non-local vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosinko?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Alentia?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, great.
That was the best conflict I ever had for a budget.
Really, that was, that was great, everybody. Thank you very much. Thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
It's only 25 minutes, Senator.
This is...
Shh.